He's going to try to log back in. So for our next meeting, this will be a regular meeting of the City Council and the WPTCA. It is Monday, August 3rd, 2020. It is now 7:30 p.m. In the Council, on the drawing is Councilman Oliver, Councilwoman Louie. So we have Councilwoman Louie participating by Zoom. I have Councilman Cavanaro and Councilman Walden participating by phone. Or Zoom, it's a decision. So I will move right into item one on this agenda. I will entertain questions through approval minutes of the public hearing held July 20, 2020. Oliver. Thank you, Councilwoman Oliver. And secondly, Councilwoman White. Are there questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Right, motion carries. Item two, I want to take question to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held July 20, 2020. Councilwoman Oliver, Councilwoman Louie, and secondly, Councilman Walden. Questions, I would like to ask. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
In short, just any abstentions. Right, item three, I'll entertain a motion to approve the mayor's appointment of Mary Andrew Lewis as a regular commissioner of the services for the other commission for a three-year term exploring and device six, 2023.
Oh, fair.
Second, and the second, by Councilwoman Oliver. Are there questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item four, I'll entertain a motion to approve the mayor's appointment of Edward Rollatt as an alternate commissioner of the services for the other commission. Thank you, Councilwoman Oliver. And secondly, Councilwoman Louie. Are there questions or missed questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item five, I'll entertain a motion to approve the mayor's frequent at the Orianna Act and John Salano as regular commissioner for the services for the other commission for three-year terms exploring device six, 2023.
Oh, fine.
Thank you, Councilmember Vino. Second, and the second, Councilwoman Louie. Questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Right, item six on the agenda. Before we walk, for purposes of discussion, I entertain a motion to approve the explanatory text for record on June 3rd, 2020. Oliver.
Okay.
It's from the right side. You're right, so. You and Oliver. All right, so do you want to talk a little bit about the explanatory text and the board of the courts office? There's something we need to do, please.
Yes. I'm trying to switch gears. I'm really confusing her since we go up. So the clerk is, has the task of making the document. So to get more information, we reached out to the Board of Ed. Got a lot of information. Then I learned that we really need to get CEAC approved, really, the state election. And we've been going down and forth with them, saying, what do you think? Is it neutral enough? And we've talked quite a bit. So I don't know. We have two versions. But we haven't written without. We think both versions gave a good picture. But just answer a whole.
Okay, so the council members here at the ZAS, I think about a hard copy. And John, can you send it to me now or forward it to the council?
Same, same thing. It's on my, I have it. More than I do.
So you know, just because there are also members from the public that are either on the phone or participating by Zoom, and if they haven't accessed this document, the body of the explanatory text is essentially the same. The only modification on the explanatory text is whether or not it's necessary to include the no rate. I think for purposes of transparency, do not read the body of the text.
Yeah.
Yeah, Anna says no, she won't read it.
Yeah.
We know that.
She's hungry.
No, I guess that's, that's like the other. You know, so you're talking about the actual question. Because they look the same, and questions look the same.
They are.
So the explanatory text in both versions is identical, right?
Just about.
And the only difference between these two is whether or not the explanatory text should include no rate impact for the voters. This explanatory text is a document that will be posted at the city website. It is a document that would be printed on poster size board and available at every polling place. It is a document that would be sent to, for, to anybody who to request emails to account. So essentially, this is, you know, these are the guiding principles, just an explanation. It's more than just the question. And as you heard the city clerk just say, it's imperative in this explanatory text that this document not advocate for or against the question. It must remain absolutely neutral. And it's a fine line, you know, you have to kill away all of the adjectives, you know, how, you know, how that is the, you know, is the building infrastructure. So I think to the clerk's credit, and to the city clerk's credit, they had a number of drafts of this. And every time they came down to a draft, that they thought that they had agreement with Board of Education, I think Eddie Arms working with the office quite closely. They would then send it to CEAC, which is the, help me, the elections.
It was actually, of course.
Of course. Right. And if they sent back a, you know, a question or, you know, a caution, you know, you might want to be careful, you know, that this language appears to be leaning one way or the other. And I think that what we have here today is, is a pretty good test. So maybe instead of reading the entire document, just for the record, do you want to read the question and then the three paragraphs of the question?
Sure. So the question we'll read on the ballot, shall the city of Torrington appropriate $159,575,000 for the construction of a new high school, a new middle school, a new central administrative office, and for the demolition of the existing Torrington High School and authorize the issuance of general obligation bonds and notes in the same amount to finance that appropriation? This appropriation will be used for the new construction and consolidation of the Torrington High School, Torrington Middle School, and central administrative offices, and the demolition of the existing Torrington High School will be to that 50 major best drive in Torrington. The appropriation may be spent for planning, design, acquisition, demolition, and construction costs, equipment, materials, site improvements, surveys, architects fees, engineering fees, remediation, project management, and other costs related to the project, interest on borrowings and other financing costs, and for administrative, printing, and financing, legal, and other cost of issuance related thereto. The existing Torrington High School building is 58 years old, and much of its infrastructure will need to be repaired or replaced over the next five years. The windows, doors, flooring, and suspended ceilings are in poor condition. Mechanical, electrical, fire protection, cooling systems are at the end of their useful life. Security systems are outdated. Code and access stability upgrades are required. Rooms need to be repaired or replaced, and maintenance and repairs are needed to prevent future damage to the building structure. The proposed Torrington Middle and High School is a new school that will be located on the same site as the current high school building. It will serve students from grades seven through 12. The new construction plan features separate academic wings and separate entrances for high school and middle school students. The plan also features a shared auditorium and performance stage, and includes the construction of a new central office, which will be located on campus. And the next section compares the cost of new construction versus maintaining the current building. And then the part that's different between version A and version B is the inclusion of estimated no rate impact and estimated tax impact for $100,000.
Thank you, Josh. So the reason we have two versions is it was a request, it was an inquiry, I shouldn't say a request, and perhaps a preference from the board of education that the estimated no rate impact not be included in this document. They did go back and review our prior explanatory texts for the road repayment program, the middle school roof, the animal control facility, the WPTCA. And it would leave the reconstruction or renovation of City Hall. And they noted that in those explanatory texts, the no rate impact was not so prominently displayed in explanatory texts. So it was a question as to, you know, if this is a departure from past practice, is this something that was necessary? The only thing that I would add is when we did the referendum question for the pavement management programs, animal control facility, middle school roof, and the street department roof, we did not include the no rate impact, but only because during all of the deliberations, the public hearings that we had prior to requesting the council and Board of Finance approve going out to referendums as part of the debt service or debt impact analysis. We calculated out over the life of the bonding, what that no rate impact might potentially be based on modest grand list growth in both real estate and motor vehicle, I should say all three, real estate, personal property, and motor vehicles. And we found that there was a modest no rate impact for that debt, which was less than 1 mil, it was about a third of a mil in the year 2021. So we didn't feel compelled in that explanatory text to include that information because essentially, the analysis showed there wouldn't be a no rate impact. That isn't the case here with this bonding. For obvious reasons, the existing bonding and the continued borrowing for road work is eating up any of that increase in our grand list growth. So this, this round of bonding would have been. So, questions, preference? Yeah, Councilman Oliver.
Aaron, on the side of transparency. I prefer the version that has the estimated no rate impact and what's the estimated tax impact for $100,000 value. Is, and the reason for that is essentially transparency. I think that generally is lacking from a lot of these types of documentation or documents, where you get the vote, but you don't understand ever what the impact is going to be unless you attend one of these meetings. However, you very rarely get to understand and really digest what the outer ears are. Here, you can actually equip your property assessed value on to determine whether or not it's, you know, fortable things of you as an individual as a taxpayer or a foreigner. So for what it's worth, I feel that this document gives the Torrington, you know, gives people from Torrington the ability to understand what it is they're voting on economically, which, who knows to you and everybody else put that together. It's fantastic. I think the rest of them should look like this.
Do these numbers change if we bring those increases?
So you made a call when we did the impact analysis. The document that was prepared when we did the, take one, pass it down. For the repayment. Thank you for the airplanes and flight, I'm on it. Yeah. So this is where, you know, I once said this, you would see where we were, we were using, and this was back in 2017, 2017, that time's a question, where we were estimating what would grand list growth look like? You know, we were using a projected grand list growth on real estate, very modest at 0.40%. We were looking at personal property growth at 5.15%. Those were based on the trends, the five-year trend prior to this analysis. And we were looking at the motor vehicle assessment growth or grand list growth at 0.8%. So when we did that analysis, we came up with what if the additional revenue, grand list growth, tax revenue, if the no rate remained absolutely flat? And that's what you see on the second page, where I applied the bottom line for each year, 2018. We were looking at additional revenue of $169,000, $368,000. That's a year 2019 grand list, additional revenue of $938,414,000. And I was applying that, we applied that to the debt impact, debt service. And that's why when you asked if we're anticipating more grand list growth that might offset this round of bonding, the answer is, no, we've already applied it to this, this debt service.
You agree with that question?
We're done with it.
I'm like, you know, in all seriousness, I don't, I agree with Oliver. I just, it was not done. So Oliver does show, I mean, I think the narrative that's given question description is very good. But it does make someone think about their vote, which is what we want to do. But, you know, I, I thought there was going to be, as I keep reading through and that very well, with the random question, I wanted to do this sort of, of multiple ways of educating being able to provide information, or information, I mean, but marketing. So I'm wondering if the Board of Ed is planning on doing that. And I think in doing that, they could also provide some of the same information. Sure.
So we have to be very careful with the word marketing because we do not want to violate any of those election laws. So no, we cannot market. And with, there can be an education, and I know that the Board of Education did appoint or elect or moved to establish a committee. They are calling it a marketing committee. But they have a clear understanding in Carolina, this, this was communication between you and the CEAC office, that there's a clear understanding that no taxpayer dollars can be spent advocating for or against this project. So hence the reason for us to be only facts, just the facts. And, and any other additional information, they have to be informational sessions. So when Ray Drew did that, the explanatory text was on his website. He did go on, it was City Views, I believe, that he participated in, where people were able to ask questions about the project. But there wasn't advocacy for or against, it was just information. And I think those are the, you know, those are the fine lines in a project, you know, like this, where the need is there, it's just how you communicate that, you know, and do so in the honor of that, to Councilman Oliver's point, clearly explains what the impact is to the taxpayer. With the, with the bonding that we did for road construction, roof repairs, and the animal control facility, there was a mailer that was also sent out. And that mailer did break down what portion of the taxpayer's tax bill would cover the cost of that one. So we may not have this, you know, this chart that showed the no rates, you know, impact year over year. There was communication that did go out to the voting public explaining what those costs for each of these projects would be. And that was a document that came out of the City Court's office. All communication regarding the referendum question is the responsibility of the city court. It must be approved by this board as the legislative board, and it can only come out of the City Court's office. However, somebody could establish a path and spend their own money advocating for, you know, when you drive through some towns where they say vote yes or vote no.
Yeah.
You can establish a path, somebody, some individual can give a path and, and use their own money to do that. We just cannot use any tax.
I think it's lovely that you can plug in your own assessed value and figure out what cost to you as a taxpayer, property owner, or a foreigner. And I think that's a very powerful yes or no decision-making tool. And we didn't have an attack.
I concur. And most positive questions that people ask.
Exactly. Well, most of them come from.
When we first began talking about the school construction project, that was one of the Torrington schools.
Yeah.
So this way, we clear there.
Exactly.
No question.
Yeah.
Just one, where it says maintain current building, it says project estimate $112,200,000. Does anticipate stay reimbursed at 72.5%? Thirty-three-nine, is that wrong? It's 72% of $112 million. I think that's vice versa.
It's right, it's right.
Says wrong here.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
We pulled it off of Sarah's presentation, so we'll double check to make sure we got it right.
Yeah. I'm just saying, and I see the avenue to take.
It's more like the 30% than the 70%. I mean, just quick round math.
Yeah.
It's $81 million worth of reimbursement. So it would be, the city net share would be less than that. It'd be 41 million, or 31 million. So these are reversed.
Yeah. Which is that they were asking to repair, am I wrong?
Considering that share is 78 million.
Yep.
300,000 is that reversed? Where that's the reimbursement is 78 million, the city spent share would be 33.9.
Then what the numbers are, are what it was on the board's presentation?
I'm just asking, here, we have a doctor in front of us to approve. I want the right number, once.
Those are coming from the board. So if the reimbursement for the maintenance, project estimate $112,200, 72.5% reimbursement from the state would be $81,345,000. Yeah. Means the taxpayer's share would be 31,855,000.
So 72.5%.
If I would let the accounting, the account do those numbers, check those numbers again.
Yes.
Yeah.
So if we're, we're moving motion tonight, I think we need to make sure it's with whatever amendments is needed for. Yeah, continue right up.
Correct numbers.
If that's the language.
Your question, though, about the form is which format do we prefer? Is that correct?
That is correct. So the motion would have to say you want the no rates included in the explanatory text or excluded.
With all the correct.
Correct.
Verified.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Yeah.
Councilman Calm, now, fine.
Yeah, again, I'm not, I'm not sure I'm jumping into this conversation. I, for the, just for the record, my, my two cents, I basically agree with everything David said. I think in the name of transparency, yes. However, whatever format that is that is put up for approval that includes what the actual impact to the mill rate would be, I would support that. And as far as being concerned that we did not do this for a prior bonding issue, it's, to me, that's a moot point, doesn't matter. If people think that that was wrong, so be it. We should just look at this as what is the best thing to do now. And I think project is size, I think everybody should know what the cost will be. And I support that. And for the record, to sing my old song, I don't believe we should go forward with this anyway at this point, a year from now. I, I, I still am extremely frustrated by the fact that we don't want to step back from this and basically say the, the entire world, but very, very specifically, education has changed since March of this year. The lessons we need to learn, the lessons we will about to learn. It would be such an opportune moment to put a hold on this and spend the next year seeing what is the best way forward for a hybrid curriculum that allows a certain percentage of kids to actually study from home. And the impact there would be on this building would be theoretically, you know, a, a substantial reduction in the number of children who are actually in this facility at any given day, a substantial reduction in the transportation costs, in the, in the food prep costs, in the maintenance costs, heating costs, cooling costs, and insurance costs. And if you start to lump all that together, my feeling is an intelligent, well-thought-out and, and aggressive approach to what we can learn from remote learning would result in a far better educational experience at some kind of impactful reduction in cost. And all we're saying is let's put off the building itself a year until we know what we want to do. Because as part of that, I'm, I've always been a huge advocate of this. I think, and, and I think we in Torrington kind of made a huge mistake a number of years ago when Malloy wanted to kind of bridge the gap between Torrington High School and Tech. I know there are a lot of, a lot of issues related to a lot of different things. Social, personal, salaries, all that business. But those all could have been overcome. And the whole goal of everything I'm hearing from this administration, and quite rightly, is that our school district needs to be much more attuned to a STEM curriculum. And the second word in that, of course, is technology. And we are maybe the only district in the entire state of Connecticut that literally has a technology school literally across the street from a high school, which literally is under consideration for complete demolition and rebuilding. And the idea that somehow, if you cannot somehow join those two physical buildings together in a shared curriculum of sorts, to me is just frustratingly missing, missing a golden opportunity to, to leverage our, our local assets into doing something that's extraordinarily special for Torrington. You know, that almost no other school district in the state of Connecticut can do. So for all those reasons, I, I know that's not what's on the agenda, and I will shut up after this. I do want to go on record as saying for this, because I don't have a pack. And I don't intend to start one. But I will advocate for the idea that we put forward this decision for a year to make a far more informed, well-thought-out, and disciplined decision regarding what a building looks like in the world of hybrid curriculum, hybrid learning. So with that, I support David's concept, and I will vote to whichever option comes forward as the one to include the, the no rate impact. I will support. Thank you.
I appreciate that. I think that especially now, as this is where the governor talked about, what does reopening our school look like? I agree, I think there's still a lot of questions about what education is going to look like going forward. And we are here at this point. So it's just a question of being as transparent as we can so the voters have all the information they need to make the, make an informed decision. You know, I'm looking at the question, thank you, Councilman Rovino, for doing that now. on the, on the inclusion of the maintained, the current building. Because this, the Board of Education's presentation material is on the city's website. And that was, this was taken right off page in their, their presentation. I can understand why there's confusion. It appears that that state share or the state reimbursement rate in italics or a lighter print says eligible items. So I'm assuming seventy-two point five percent isn't on the entire cost of the maintenance, but on just those eligible items? And under those circumstances, not knowing what those eligible items are, not knowing how clear this is, is it really pertinent to the explanation to include it?
I, I, I agree.
Yes.
It's very confusing to have the maintained because that isn't the vote. The vote is very clear.
That's true.
The instructions, so at that point, I would believe the maintained current.
Can we please verify that first? Before we commit completely. I just want to make sure that whatever the anticipated reimbursement rate, that's seventy-two, is of those eligible items and we're not just dealing with a math error.
Yeah.
Because otherwise it would be, I would think, it might be misleading that way.
Can you table this for tonight and have a thorough version?
Might be helpful, more helpful that way.
I'm sorry?
I hate to do that, I don't know about our documents.
Yeah, so there are Secretary of State and the Elections Committee.
Yeah, that's what I asked.
The other thing is, they make an explanation. And then the question is starting about construction and demolition, it's not happening.
Sure.
So maintenance is something we can do. I guess the other question you are going down, this is what I'm talking about. Maintenance. So I, I agree with Anne, I
Just take that.
I think the new construction part is integral, that's what I'm saying. Alright, so then if I'm hearing the council.
I'll be right back. Whatever the motion is supposed to say, I'll say it.
So the, the motion on the table was to approve the explanatory text for Rock Island to be held on the third, 2020. Motion made by Councilwoman Luette, seconded by Councilwoman Oliver. So the explanatory text would be, would include the estimated mill rate impact and exclude any reference to the maintained current building.
Is there not, or make the team just really take the anticipated state reimbursement, don't put sixty-two point five there? This way we don't show the calculations of what is reimbursement, what isn't. That way it just shows the anticipated reimbursement, the state is. There is, there's the number eighty-four million, nine hundred thousand. That way you don't get mixed up. When I do the counts for sixty-four percent, I come up with ninety-four million, you know, it's different, so.
Because that's about the other people's items again.
Exactly, it's confusing there.
I want to prepare and just say the anticipated is this amount.
Exactly.
That's fair to the voter.
Yeah, correct.
We're not lying to them if it increases or decreases, we're anticipating the state reimbursement to this amount.
Okay.
Okay. You have another question?
Yeah, I do.
That's my question, that to do with, so they had to make sure that they got their application in like certain dates, that's how we need to come up with a law. So don't they know what the state reimbursement will be based on that application?
No.
Is it a minimum, about sixty-two? Is there any?
I think, yeah, I think there's guidelines, you know, that says it would be sixty-two percent, sixty-two and a half percent of those eligible items. The reason they don't know exactly what that reimbursement is going to be because even mine, what they presented to this board was a concept, concept, I know. There was, it was not final design, there were no final numbers on what the actual construction is going to be. So we're still really dealing with very conceptual numbers. But the project estimate, I think that ONG had done the project cost analysis. I think they have a pretty good idea of what it's going to cost total. I think they're very expert in knowing which of those items are eligible. So I think these numbers are.
But the vote, the vote is to not go up one fifty-nine, five seventy-five.
Correct.
Right.
So. So if when they do their final design and it goes out to bid and it comes in higher than the one fifty-nine, five seventy-three, nine oh three, there'll be some value or generic, okay, yeah.
That number is different than the actual shortage.
Yeah.
Yes.
The numbers are different.
They just lost on it.
Yeah.
Two thousand.
Two thousand.
Two thousand dollars.
Yeah. One thousand one hundred, one thousand ninety-seven. Who's, who's executive decision was that?
Thanks, my bad. I was saying, ask the major days.
Yeah.
I don't know, I just think the numbers should match.
Mm-hmm.
So the project estimate one fifty-nine, five seventy-five, estimated state reimbursement without reference to the percentage at eighty-four, nine, forty-nine, eight twenty.
Yeah.
And then that share, they just bring that up, one, one thousand ninety-seven.
Just so uncomfortable with not having the numbers in voting list.
Alright, so the modifications were announced. I'm sorry? I'll do the quick math.
You take the sixty-two and a half percent. And then you can, then you can, the project estimate, one fifty-nine, five seventy-five.
Yep.
About one, one fifty-nine, five seventy.
Do you have a? Okay. So the motion that I would need to be made would be to approve the explanatory text. We're not making any modifications to the text itself. The explanatory text to re- new construction, project estimate one hundred fifty-nine million, five hundred seventy-five thousand. Estimated state reimbursement eighty-four million, nine forty-nine, eight twenty. And the city net share before financing costs, seventy-four million, six hundred twenty-five thousand, one hundred eighty dollars. There'll be no reference to the maintained current building, but it will include the estimated mill rate impact.
And we still know about what that number is, just to make sure it's correct, the eligible items.
I'm sorry.
On the maintained current building project?
Yes.
That, those percentages, I just want to make sure that number is still correct and we don't have math issue. Because we seem to be wrong when math issues on this form. So regardless of the source of those numbers, I just would like to see the form produced accurately.
So we're going to eliminate, maintain the current building. Does it matter? I mean, we're going to eliminate it entirely?
I just said I would like to know. I don't know about anybody else. I would just like to know if, if the, these numbers are correct, regardless of whether or not they're in there, if we still have a project to manage. We have a responsibility to the City Council to know that these numbers are correct, because I just want to make sure that these numbers shouldn't be reversed and you know, the general public might be looking instead at a bill of thirty-three-nine versus seventy-eight.
Well, and this is, this is information that the Board of Education may have handy. Somebody asked, well, what would it cost to maintain?
Yeah.
So it's valid that this needs to be correct.
So I, I couldn't withdraw my motion.
Okay.
I'm really uncomfortable playing with the numbers when I have any emotional adversity and
Yeah.
So even if we are able to do this telethonically, because it doesn't require it, and just, I'm not coming, I'm lost change on the table, my motion to table this.
Okay. I have a motion to table.
I think you're right.
I have a motion to table, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion to table and a second, all in bed.
And I.
Any votes?
Sorry to everyone's hard work.
No, no, it's, it was a conversation we needed to have to move on that moment. So we can do some verification on the other numbers and bring back a final draft so that everyone sees it in the meeting before they vote.
Yeah.
Okay. I, I'm seven. I will entertain a motion considering refund of taxes paid by Kids Play Museum in accordance with Corporation Counsel's memorandum dated July 22nd, 2020 pending authorization from the board of finance.
Sure.
Thanks, Oliver, and seconded by Councilwoman Lardner. Are there questions from any of the council members?
Are you talking about, or there's two?
Alright. Any more questions on my favor?
Alright.
Any votes? Motion please. Alright, item eight. I'll entertain a motion to authorize a merit to enter for this agreement with Lindley Acquisition for DVA Trio Community Meals for approximately one hundred sixty-seven square feet of space at the Sullivan Senior Center to be used as a staging area for hot meals for the Litchfield Fiddles Northwest, a little nutrition program. Oliver, thank you, President Oliver.
Second.
And then, I'm sorry, I'm just second. Honesty Oliver is going to sit last, so Honesty Oliver. Ed Joel is here. Did you want to talk a little bit about the proposal or?
Yeah, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Basically, the Lindley now occupies space across the street. That building is recently sold, so an opportunity came up to, for them, they were going to lose their space across the, across the way, so we got together and we talked about possibly doing it at the senior center. They would be there about seven o'clock in the morning and be there till nine or nine thirty in the morning, it doesn't interrupt any of my operations. We're using a really small secondary room off of the kitchen to add in some heating units. It will bring in revenue to the city, which it hasn't been actually determined where that's going to go. We were talking about putting it into a contingency fund or into something that would be there in the future to help with projects, say the roof is leaking or something like that. It would be there for any department building, not just my own. And it's an awesome opportunity for us. I can tell you, when Portacopia did our food, three quarters of my trucks had to travel fourteen miles a day just to go up and get the food. Since we've been across the street, it's been a huge savings. We would not lose that opportunity if the staging area was at the senior center, so that's a win. The revenue's a win for the city and also his rent being reduced by being next door and coming to the senior center within his lease, that would give them an opportunity when the RFP begins next year or the next three to five year contract where he would be able to come in with a lower price for our food purchasing, which would keep our price down and which would allow us to serve more senior meals. So there's really not a loss in this aspect. The space being used is an underused storage area which we repurposed during COVID while we were closed and made the space ready and allowing us to maximize that spot for the city and the program. So I really don't see a loss here in any capacity. It's a really easy out in at least thirty days. If something wasn't working out or if they didn't get their contract in the next service area. So if any of you have any questions, I'm pretty sure.
The only thing I have a question would be the upgrading of the electrical support, the heating units.
All the costs are.
Yeah, I mean, the electrical costs that senior center is going to take in. Especially those units, heating units are, we're matching our three faces.
Yes.
And what you're going to be spending for electrical, as everybody knows about.
Yeah. That cost analysis, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, Councilman.
Okay.
Councilman, what I came up with was using a full day and doubling the output, what specs are of each unit being on at full. Plus there's a truck that would be plugged in outside of a refrigerator truck. I used a full day for that as well instead of just three hours. What I came up with was about six hundred dollars a year for the entire additional usage. I worked with Ray Drew on that as well as the price per square foot for the space. So Ray was brought in early in the process and we were shown all that stuff. I'm familiar with the equipment from like years back in the restaurants, so it's pretty easy to look up and find out what the usage would be. The true test would be the first six months of usage. There'll be more usage from the reefer truck in the summer months, the refrigerator would be plugged in. As an example, probably about three or four months a year, because when you pull it up outside and then the key should probably be fair with the system with the press core units. But there are days when they only use two of them. I worked out the cost with all four units all the time.
Excellent, thank you.
So I went really high. I think it'll come out much less than that.
No. Yeah, you did that, thank you.
And the other thing that I would add is when Joe presented this opportunity for proposal to us, what we were looking at also is when you look at the maintenance of that building, right now you need to approve and roof repairs, which will come before this board soon.
We meet tomorrow.
Yes, yeah. So, and we know that, to cover that, we're looking at, you know, ways to borrow from our capital reserves. And with this rental income coming, revenue that we would not traditionally have, it's not taxpayer revenue. We can use this to offset those capital investments in the building. Once the roof is paid for, we can continue to use these funds for additional capital improvements. So another great idea that Joe brought to us and I was grateful for you to do it there. If there are no other questions, I'll call motion, all in favor? Any votes? I know she carries, thank you, Joel.
Thank you.
Item number nine. I want to adjourn motion to accept the recommendation of the purchasing agent Lieutenant Thomas Luwo to authorize the board to partial bid for police department uniforms to Millie McNew from LLC Danbury for the annualized estimate of sixty-three thousand eight hundred fifty-eight thousand Vintessence and OGS Technologies Inc. for Chester Connect Kit for the annualized estimate of one thousand one hundred eighty-one dollars as described in Lieutenant Luwo's memo dated July 16th. This is again pending, pending the board's safety. Which is scheduled for once. If you're comfortable with that. In a second, the council will be direct. Questions in motion? There are none other thing. I want to, are any votes? I'm sure she carries. Okay, the next item on the agenda is an executive session. So I will entertain a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to connect with section one dash two hundred, subsection six, subsection B, regarding strategy and negotiations with respect to pending claims or pending litigation. This is Elaine Gabiachi versus the City of Torrington. In this executive session, I would elect to include Corporation Counsel Victor Michelle, Kirma-appointed Counsel Joanna Zellman. Okay. So with the Corporation Counsel Victor Michelle and Kirma-appointed attorney Joanna Zellman, right, motion? Seconded by Councilwoman Wagner, Oliver, bear. For the record, it's eighty-two. Okay, so for Paul Cavanero, Councilwoman Cavanero and Councilwoman Walden, we're going to call you guys into the executive session because I